Okay, well, welcome everyone as we sort through a few technical difficulties perhaps, but I hope we can all hear, I hope you can hear us for the moment at least and while we kind of work on getting our board members admitted here. Just give just a moment, see if Catherine can call back in. But you know, since seeing we're at the appointed hour here, I'll go ahead and call this board meeting to order. We do have at least a quorum of board members on the call at this point. So, so we'll call this to order. So, thank you everyone for taking the time this evening to dial up here and listening to some updates from our school district. If you don't know me, my name is Alan Neider from the board chair currently at the Brookings Harbor School District. So, let's kind of call this meeting to order and just off the top say, you know, you know, given all the circumstances we've been through with COVID and the school shutdown and all the different regulations and rules and health and safety standards we've been, you know, more or less forced to live by, you know, going to school is a big question. And how's that going to work in the fall? And to that end, the Oregon State Department of Education, along with our district has put out a certain set of guidelines and then some of it are mandated and some of it are left up to our district to interpret some particular rules. So, you know, it's our intent to really try to communicate as much and often and as, you know, as completely as we can as a district to get the word out to our community and our students and our parents to let everyone know where we're at right now and what we see the fall shaping up like and how things may or may not change going forward. So, to that end, I'm going to turn the floor over, as it were, to Mr. David Marshall, our new superintendent, and he's going to give us a bit of an update of where we're at now and some of the considerations and kind of more or less an update and what we can hopefully expect going forward. So, Mr. Marshall?
All right, great. Thank you. And so, thank you, Alan, and thank you, school board, for supporting this session. That was one of the things that I heard loud and clear is that it is critical through this process that the school board and the district are very transparent in what we're doing, as well as making sure that the information is getting out regularly as we proceed through the planning process. And I also want to thank Nancy Rauskas Coons and Angela Crum. They're going to be helping us moderate this. This is a little bit of an experiment. We wanted to work with this format, see if that works for being able to get live feedback, as well as capturing the feedback to be able to post later. So, hopefully, we won't have too many hiccups in it, but felt that it was important to try a different format to see if this will increase the feedback that we're getting. So, so, thank you, and also thanks to Chris Schofield for helping us work through the technical issues. Although, I do want to point out, I asked him about a camera that might make me a little more handsome, and he said the district cannot afford one. So, we're stuck with what we've got, unfortunately. So, so, we will get into it. So, the format will be, let me actually get to share screen here. Okay, you need to make me a co-host, Nancy. That went away.
Coming right up. One second.
Thank you.
Okay, you are now a co-host.
Perfect. Okay, so hopefully folks can see the PowerPoint presentation. Alan, thumbs up. Can you see it? Okay, great. So, process for this evening. We'll go through this presentation, share background and information about where we are in the planning process. Since this is a public meeting, it is being recorded, and we're primarily going to use it to make sure that we are capturing all of the comments and questions. And at the end of the presentation, we're going to have a Q and A, and we will answer as many questions as possible. One, where there's a known answer, and two, with the time available. And so, any questions that we're not able to get to and/or that have not, we haven't gotten to the point in the planning process where we have a definitive answer, we will post those on the district website in the FAQ. And in addition, we'll have additional opportunities for feedback, things such as this, and you're always welcome to email me and call as well. So, big picture overview. Recently, end of June, executive order 2029 was issued, where the governor directed the Department of Education to develop their plans and guidelines for how schools can reopen in the fall. And there's directed that that was done in cooperation with Oregon Health Authority. Oregon school districts are required to follow the plan elements, and Mr. Neider pointed out, some of it, there are a lot of things that districts can opt to do, but in the plan document, some of the things say required, and if it says required, districts are obligated to follow those requirements. And at the extreme, if a district opted not to follow those requirements, the district would potentially miss losing state school funding. So, the Department of Education developed the Ready School Safe Learners Handbook, and we have a link to that on our About page on the website. So, if you want to look at the whole, I think, 47 pages, you are more than welcome to. In fact, encourage that. And they have scheduled periodic updates to that plan. Most recently was at the end of the month, at the end of June, with another update scheduled for July 21st and August 11th. So, all of the information and details that we have at this time are based on the most current version, but I do want to put out there that there is certainly potential there, subject to change, and there is that possibility when we're together, depending on how things develop. So, we, as we've started our planning process, our guiding principles in the district and the district leadership are staff and student safety, followed by following the plan guidelines and requirements, with the maximum amount of in-person time daily with each student while following those requirements. We also recognize that there's absolutely going to be a need to purposefully make time at the start of the year to reconnect with students and making sure that we're very conscious in how we approach social emotional supports, as well as embed opportunities for kids to be kids and to make sure that it's fun and look for those opportunities in this process and try to avoid, you know, as much fear with the students as possible. So, key parts of the plan that we are required to do at this point is 35 square feet for each student in their classrooms. So, if a student has an individual desk, that's counted as part of that, but otherwise, classes need, we need to count 35 square feet per kid. Any other flat spaces, teacher desk, those are all subtracted from the available square footage. So, we've been doing that work now in terms of calculating the amount of students that can be in a room. Other elements of the plan, hand hygiene, frequent washing, soap and water, or using hand sanitizer. We're in the process, we've ordered significant amount of additional hand sanitizer dispensers, and those dispensers are required in the plan to have at entrances. We're looking at having those in as many key locations as possible. Another element of the plan is contact tracing. Our intent is that that's in the background, so that that is not something that the students hopefully will not be obviously aware of, but we need to track where the kids are, even where they're sitting, where they're sitting on the bus, and that we would have to, in the event of any sort of illness or outbreak, we would need to provide that information to the health authorities so that they can follow up with their part of the process. And the last significant component that helps guide what we are able to and not able to do is the concept of cohorts. And that this is somewhat of a vague part of the plan guidelines. We're required to have cohorts, and ODE directs us to keep them as small as we reasonably can within our setting and limit the amount of interaction between cohorts. And so, those are guiding principles. Obviously, there's going to be lots of detailed questions about how that gets applied, but these are the principles that the plans are made by. So, big picture and even just, you know, the limited time I've been in the community, probably the number one question that I've received is, you know, will my child have to wear a mask when school returns and they come back in session? And so, under the current guidelines, no, students will not be required to wear a mask. They certainly may opt to, but they're not going to be required to. Staff as well, in most cases, won't be required to wear a mask. There are specific instances lined out, for example, such as a speech therapist, where they have to be physically close to a student to do their work. Those people would need to wear masks, as well as food service and transportation. So, lots of questions to work through, but that's the current mask guidelines. And that also addresses, and we have guidelines, because I'm sure folks are well aware, we are under, from the state level, says there's a mask directive that in public spaces, everyone is supposed to wear a mask. We have very specific guidance saying, while that is accurate and we are public schools, how it will be operated is it's not going to be considered a public space. And so, that's with all the other precautions, the cohorting and that sort of thing, that that's how we're able to not have a mask required. And again, that's at this time. So, the other significant piece of information, and probably why most of you have tuned in, and we know is going to have a tremendous impact, is with our square footage and transportation capabilities, we will need to open in the fall with a split schedule. And that means with one group of students attending, in our case, a morning session, and then a different group of students attending an afternoon session. There are still lots of details to work out, but the administration, the board felt it was very important that once this determination was made, we really need to share that out with the community so that we can begin the process, so that community members can begin their own problem solving process, as well as the district. And so, we are committing, I am committing to making it a priority to proactively work towards finding and supporting solutions that increase the availability of childcare in our community. We recognize that it's going to, it presents significant challenges for our community members, as well as many of our staff members. So, we've already started those discussions. We've already started reaching out to different nonprofit community organizations. We're reaching out to faith-based organizations and even looking within our own system, such as the possibility of even having, like, potentially some of our older kids help support the childcare with the younger students. So, we're going to get really creative and be very focused on increasing that, because we recognize that as a significant, substantial need for our community as we look at the start of schools with that half the students at any given time. So, we do have a community feedback survey that is still live, and it's live through the end of the day tomorrow. We will be providing additional opportunities and additional surveys, but we really wanted to gather some additional information. And so far to date, we have just a little over 300 responses, represent a representative slice of our demographics, including some of our Spanish-speaking families. So, some highlights or themes that we have seen so far in the survey is there are concerns from families about schools in the district following or not following the safety and cleaning protocols, and of which there will be a significant amount of those. And so, they're saying, how is it going to, you know, I'm worried it won't be done well, is the essential concern there. So, the cleaning and those protocols are required parts of the plan. Those are already being worked on. We've already, again, as I mentioned, are in the process of ordering additional cleaning equipment, as well as supplies. And we're also, time will be allocated at the start of the school year, the student school year, to provide training and practice for the students. And that, it's really important to us that that has a positive approach and focus. We recognize that as the students come back, one, they haven't been in school for nearly half a year, and so, the intent is not to, that, you know, you must follow the rules or you're going to be in trouble. It's, we will work through this together. We will do this in a positive way to help support the students with how we have to operate under the new guidelines. The concerns were expressed about scheduling with families with siblings in multiple buildings. And so, we're committed to, all three of our schools will do fall scheduling, essentially do that together with families in mind. Priorities will be given to making sure siblings are doing the same session. So, all the siblings are in the afternoon session or in the morning session. And we will also give individual families the opportunity to request, maybe if that doesn't meet their needs best, there'll be a process for them to say, I'd rather have my older student in the morning session and my younger students in the afternoon session. That will be part of the process where we can factor those in. And of course, the big one, the childcare, that's, that's probably the most significant theme. And again, we are looking at all potential avenues, both inside and outside the district, on ways that we can support that, including searching for grant funds as well, to provide some supplemental funding. Another question that we've seen that's out there is, is will there be a full, fully online option for, for schools to return in the fall? And at this point, the honest answer is, we hope so. That is our goal. We're reviewing some different options and availability to have that as an option. But I'll be honest, our focus is, at this point, working through the logistics of having students physically in the buildings. But that is, that is on our radar, that is a priority, and so, we are working through that as well, of how to provide that as an option for our community. In addition, as part of our required, the required planning elements is, we have to plan for the possibility of a temporary shutdown. If there is an outbreak in the community and the health department says the outbreak has grown to a large enough level, then school may need to be shut down. And the intent and goal, and all our planning is, that's as short a time as possible, hopefully two to three weeks maximum, and then be able to resume in session. On the flip side of it, with, again, there are certainly some, with the other announces, we need, we will also be planning for the possibility and the hope that if the restrictions are able to be loosened, and this, and particularly the square footage required and is able to be reduced, if we're able to have all the students with us, that's our intent, and that we would plan on making that transition as quickly as we can to that. But right now, for the start of school, we're essentially looking at half the students at any time during the day. Additional feedback, there's concerns, again, it's, you know, there's, there's going to be too many rules and restrictions for the kids, and kids not being able to play and be kids, lack of socializing, those sorts of things. And so, that's part of where the concept of the cohorting comes in, is by having students in those smaller intact groups, that does permit more of, they will be able to go out to recess, they will be able to play, just not as we were able to do last fall with, you know, all of a particular grade or group of kids, hundreds of them together recess. It will be smaller, but those are key elements where, yeah, that's a part, allowing them to reconnect and socialize. Another question's come up is safety on the bus with distancing. Those guidelines are very clearly addressed in there, and that's why one of the, why it's one of the drivers in terms of how many kids we can safely transport back and forth at any given time. One note in there is that it is called out where members of the same family can all sit together on the same seat. So, that does increase our transportation capacity there, and there are requirements for cleaning in between and all that. All that's addressed, all those details will be planned out as we work through this process. So, that's understandable that that's part of, that are some of the concerns. Additional considerations that we've already started talking about. There's a strong consensus, and we will be making more detailed plans about dedicating some time at the start of the school year. We're not going to jump back into reading and math instruction on day two when the kids come back. We recognize that we need to take some time to work with the students, to reconnect with them, allow them to reform their connections between each other, essentially being purposeful about rebuilding community. And again, our underlying theme is having a positive and supportive approach to this work and how we interact and work with our students. So, that was relatively short and sweet, so we'll, we'll answer as many questions as time permits. If the answer is not known at this time, and there may be a fair amount of them, the response will be posted on our district website. We're, we'll be developing an FAQ, and we will continue to add to that. And again, we're planning on additional listening sessions and trying to find the formats that allow the broadest amount of input, as well as opportunities to ask questions. And certainly, you're always welcome to email me directly, call the office and schedule a time to visit. My email's on there, and I will post this presentation on the website afterwards. So, lastly, next steps are, next week, early in the week, we have just under 40 staff members who volunteered to serve on the staff advisory committee for starting school back up again. So, these folks will have their first meeting early next week. We'll go over the overview and the parameters of the planning process. And then, later in the week, that group will reconvene, and all this will be virtually at this time. That group will reconvene, and then they will work at a building level with their building administrators and really start to get into the nuts and bolts of the building operations and instruction and moving the kids from A to B, and how we're going to do that. Some of that rough work has already been done, but having staff input and involvement in the process is going to be critical. So, I believe that that is it. Let me stop sharing. And so, Nancy, what, in terms of questions that you are seeing, what are you seeing on the chat?
There we go.
So, hi, this is Nancy Rauskas Coons, the Public Information Officer for the school district. And I'm going to run through the questions that were pre-submitted online before this meeting from the community. We have about five of those that came in ahead of the meeting, and then I'll run through a few things from the group chat that's happening right now. And when I'm done with that, if there has been additional chat or questions that have popped up, Angela Crum can help voice those. So, here is the first comment that we received, and I know that some of our board members are joining by phone, so I will also read them out. "I have read that you will try to keep groups together all day. My grandson has speech and OT, which would cause him to have to leave and be in another room or with other kids and with other teachers. How will that work?"
That's a good question. And that, among other things, are some of the considerations that we will have to work through. Our intent and goal, and what we're directed to, is to have that be as, as few interchanges as possible, but there, there's not going to be the ability to say, this student is only in one cohort for the entire day. In most cases, that's just not going to be feasible. And so, it is having the cohorts be the smallest amount of cohorts that we can feasibly do, and then having the other supporting protocols in place in terms of the cleaning and the interaction between them. A common solution that's been talked about around the state is, instead of having the kids move from class to class, is you have the people come in. Yes, that's still introducing different people, but that's one people, so this one person, so the students are still an intact group. There's also guidance about, depending on the length of time that the person is working with the student. And so, that's where we're working with the amount of square footage that we have, and, you know, maybe potentially isolating space for that work to happen, maintaining social distance, and then, and then the specialists can move on to the next thing. So, it's not going to be perfect. We will do the absolute best we can with those questions. There's questions also even about special programs and unique classes, lab classes. There's processes to work through is, how can we work through that while doing the best that we can to maintain the distancing and the cohorts with that sort of thing? You know, even other specialist classes, PE. So, these are, this is the work that the teacher advisory groups and the administrators, we will all work together to come up with the solutions for those specific questions.
Okay, the next question we received ahead of the meeting was, how is the mental health of students that are not going to school and don't have a normal routine being addressed?
That's a big priority. That's a great question. Like I said earlier, we're going to be dedicating time at the start of the year and obviously throughout the year to address that. That was also one of the drivers of the consensus among this, the district leadership of the need to have kids in school every day. With the community survey, we, one of the questions we asked of, if we can't, if we don't have room for all the students to be able to be in school at once, is there a preference for rotating days or having a split day, and that way you have all kids at least once a day? Some districts are doing rotating days. I've heard a rumor that Portland is even doing rotating weeks. So, a student would come one week and then not the next, and do their work online the next week. We felt very strongly, and for that reason, of that daily connection and reconnecting to the kids and providing them that routine and those supports for the time they're with us, was a big driver and very important.
Okay. The next question we received was, how will the board work with the teachers' union, both local and state, to ensure the health and safety of staff if the district decides to bring students and teachers back into the classroom?
Most of that is really addressed in, by developing plans that follow the guidelines and the requirements of the ODE, OHA guidelines. So, by following the health department's rules and requirements, we will be doing everything possible to reduce risk to staff and students. We also recognize that through this process, there is going to be questions that we will need to address with our union and our contract. I've already had an initial meeting with the union leadership, and really, again, the goal there is to work together to come up collaboratively with the best solution for starting school.
"If the district decides to move to a hybrid schedule, such as splitting the cohort Monday through Thursday, every other day, 10-hour day, for example, will Friday become extra paid day for planning, IET meetings, staff professional development, grading, etc.?"
Sounds like a staff question.
Yes, we have quite a few staff submitted questions.
So, what's known now is that we are moving forward with that split day. Any other questions like that in terms of planning time, even PLC time, those sorts of things, we still need to address. So, that is undecided at this moment.
"Will we be spending the same amount of time with each student class as we were March 13th, which was just before our COVID closure? What percentage in-person, what percentage online?"
Well, right now, it's half in-person is what we're looking at for practical purposes. So, it'll be about half the time the students were, hopefully, a little bit more than half of the in-person, and then with some supplemental and online follow-up beyond the half in-person.
Ooh, this is a longer one. I'll try to, I think it's about electives. "Have we brought up any classes, trainings promoting skills that could be offered to the youth following social distancing? These classes, trainings could be skills building in such areas as carpentry, engineering, welding, automotive, culinary arts, medical field management training, and so much more. If the youth have to follow this social distancing protocol, then shouldn't we aid their future by offering career-building classes that assist them in career?"
I'm not entirely sure I understand the question.
I will attempt to summarize one more time. It is a long question. So, this was from one of our local tribal partners, and they, they were asking, will we essentially be teaching some career-related social distancing skills?
Oh, so what it looks like in these different settings? And I'd say we would need to. I mean, in order to even do the instruction in these areas, we would need to look at how you apply the requirements to those specific areas. How does social distancing look in foods class? How does it look in auto shop and welding? And certainly, again, we will be taking some time at the start of the year to work with all of the students on that. And I think that's a great idea in terms of looking at how does that connect to other things and how can we support the students in that area?
I think this is the last one of the, okay. "I would propose if Brookings Harbor School District must do face-to-face learning for all five school days, that we have two groups of students, but instead of the AM PM schedule, we have two days with the first group, a day in between for deep cleaning and disinfecting." a day in between for deep cleaning and disinfecting, and then the second group would attend the other two days. I believe this is a safe option, a safer option than the AM PM schedule.
And that's, we received other feedback like that, as I stated earlier with the survey. It was nearly fifty fifty in terms of community level preference for one, the split model day, split day, or alternating days during the week. We did factor in as we were doing the initial planning to ensure and work with the maintenance department that there was time in between the two shifts to clean the areas that we need to clean. That is all part of the plan and has to be part of the plan. So, but I fully understand and respect that perspective and that person is not the only one there, so.
Okay, so moving on to just a few of the comments that have come in from people participating in the Zoom chat tonight. Everyone should wear masks and a response, I agree, this is incredibly worrisome. And these are just comments that we want to share to get in the record. So if you have a response, great, if not, I can move on.
We will follow the guidelines in place.
In life skills, we have to be close to some students. What would that look like?
Exactly. Those are some of the real specialized questions that we have to dig into. Those may be areas where in order to do that work, it makes sense to have personal protective equipment required. In certain instances, we can even look at things like movable plexiglass barriers to help address those safety needs as well. But those are definitely questions and Angela Crum has certainly already been working with her staff on processing those questions and coming up with solutions.
Looks like we have one additional comment or question that came in before I pass it back. With AM and PM sessions, how do electives fit in? Would it be taught between sessions, every other day, et cetera?
Those are questions that the advisory groups and the principals will be digging into in detail. So really our goal was, we had to, the first part of the process was to identify what we could do. What did we have the capacity to do in terms of square footage? What do we have the capacity to do in terms of transportation? Those were the big drivers and we really could not proceed with anything else until the determination was made that, okay, we have enough square footage and transportation capacity to have around half the students in the school at any given time. From there, there's still a lot to be determined, a lot to be figured out. And again, what I've seen in other districts is that work goes best if we're all putting our heads together to, one, identify those questions and then two, work together to come up with solutions that meet the requirements that also best fit the needs in Brookings.
So I'll pass it off to, back to you and Board Chair Alan unless Angela has anything else to add from the chat. And we'll record everything for later if we don't get it now.
Thank you, Nancy. I have not noticed any hands going up, so I think we have covered all of our questions that we've had thus far.
Oh, come on, I want to see a live question. Somebody's really brave enough to raise their hand and come out on screen.
Oh, there we go, Sky Marie. Okay, you should be unmuted.
See, I don't, I don't know if you can see me or hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, I don't know how to turn camera on or anything.
All right, thank you.
My question is also just dealing with electives and wondering about things like, you know, like choir, how I know California has said that they, you know, have bands singing in places of worship and things like that. My daughter is all about choir and she's really concerned about will there be choir for fall? Will that be able to happen? And just wondering also like these electives, do we have any idea how, how any of this might look?
Well, there's still a lot to work through with that, but we've already had discussions and really our priority is to essentially to continue and be mindful of continuing as many of the programs as we can. That it would be a huge negative if we had to pause the students' ability to participate in choir. So we will do everything possible and get really creative and look for ways that are allowable under the rules with an eye towards continuing to support the programs such as that, that, that are really, it's a negative impact on the kids as well as the program if we have to do a pause. So that would be a priority to not. And then, then the next question is, okay, how can we make it work? Would it suffice to practice in an outdoor covered area? If it would, then we, okay, then what spaces do we have available to do that? And so really that's where we got to get down to the creative thinking and having that back and forth process so that we can support and preserve as much of the momentum and the things that connect the kids to school as we can. And it's choir, it's athletics is a huge question as well. And, and it's undetermined at this moment in terms of what and if there will be a fall season. We've even had some initial conversations and initial input is, you know, if we don't, if OSAA says we just can't do a fall season, we would be looking internally for things that are allowable under rules that we can do to continue it. Just for example, under the current guidance, our sports teams can practice, no contact, anything like that. But they had to develop a plan with the athletics department as well as Trish, our nurse, that met OSAA guidelines. But following those guidelines, they can practice and actually as of July one, they have been practicing. And so our intent would be to look for every opportunity to at least have the kids have some form of connection with that, even if your traditional ones are restricted. So we're very mindful of that and really that's why we need and want your input in this process of again, identifying and then helping to be creative in terms of our problem solving. That's one of the positive and exciting parts is while we have some non-negotiable requirements, there are a lot that we can really be creative about that as long as they work for our students, our staff and our community, we can do. And so that I think will be the positive and exciting part of the work. Did that answer your question, Sky?
David, I muted her. Would you like me to unmute?
Sure.
There we go, Sky, you're unmuted. There you go.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And yeah, I just, I know you guys have a really big, big job to do. And I just appreciate everything that you guys are doing to try to, to help it all come together and flex through this kind of crazy time. Thank you to everyone who's working really hard.
Yeah, and I, and I would echo that. There's, there's lots of work to do. There's certainly looking on a positive side, some unique and positive opportunities. But we also have to recognize that, you know, there, there has been loss. You know, certainly from the school perspective, it's like staff want to be with the kids, the kids mostly want to be in school. That's, that's a loss. There's anger, there's frustration, there's sadness. Those are all there and there's fear. All of those themes, certainly an input we've received from staff as well as a community are there. We have to recognize that and be mindful of that. And really the best result we're going to get is by moving forward together. And, and your board is committed to and I'm committed to, one, a transparent process and two, gathering and having as much consideration of the input as possible and giving community and staff multiple opportunities as well. That's how we're going to make it work.
Hi, David, this is Catherine. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yay. So I just have a question because I know that we have students that are, fall in the high-risk category. And are, are we going to provide, if those parents choose to want to keep them home, are we going to provide the curriculum and the resources they need to continue to educate their children? Or are we, or is there going to be another alternative?
So that's one of the, thank you, Catherine. That is one of the plan requirements is that if a student, and I off the top of my head, I don't remember, but like you said, they're in a demonstrated high-risk category and the family's saying it's not safe for my child because of their additional health risks to come to school in person, that we're required to provide comprehensive distance learning for those individual students. And so again, like I said earlier on, our intent is to, to develop a system that there's with staffing and with what the system will be in terms of even just the online framework for it, where that's not just available for students in that situation. We're not there yet, but that's our goal and our target is to have that be parallel to the in-person opportunities as well.
Great, thank you.
Angela, would you like to read some more of these chat bar questions?
Sure. One moment. Okay. So so there was a follow, oh, there's a question about what food service will look like.
Oh, great, okay. Thank you. So where we are right now, working with our principals and the food service director is the, the model or the tentative plan is that the, the morning shift of students, the morning session, they would come to school and most likely we would be doing, delivering meals to the room. So they would have meals with their cohort in their class. And then when they leave at the middle of the day, they would receive some form of sack lunch or snack to send them home with. So then the afternoon gets coming, they would have a meal and that would be delivered to their classroom and then be sent home in the afternoon with some sort of snack or sack lunch. We believe we have the capacity to do that and that this approach will meet the requirements, the health and safety requirements of the plan. We recognize and part of the detailed conversations, anytime you get one thing, there's like twenty questions that come from it. For example, recognizing the need to be very conscious of food safety, meaning like students with allergies and that sort of thing. So that will have to be all a detailed part of the plan of making sure that we are able to safely get the meals to those students. And then having that process work well and be manageable with the staff that we have. But initial meetings, we are fairly confident that that model will work.
Okay, thank you. There is a question regarding temperature scans as students arrive at school.
Right now, temperature scans are not part of the requirement. If there is a question or a student is symptomatic, then that would be part of the health protocol. But right now it is a, it's essentially, it's a visual check. And there are very specific criteria that staff will be looking for as, as the students are entering the building as well as the buses. And then there will be a process and procedure if a student is, is, is demonstrating any of those specific symptoms. Of course, the challenge is going to be, there's going to be potentially heightened sensitivity. You know, any student with a runny nose is going to be, oh my gosh, this kid is horribly sick. And so positive part of the guidelines is they're very specific with what conditions that we should be looking out for. And then what is our health protocol in response to that? Trish has been great to work with. She's been our connection directly to the, the health authority. And, and we will continue that work as the plan develops in terms of they have to be involved with the process. And just, and I'm not sure if it was in the slideshow. So the due date for the completed plan is no later than August fifteenth. Obviously, our intent is prior to that. And our plan gets submitted to both our county health, who then they attest that they received it. They review it and, and that they will work with us if there's any questions or concerns. The plan does go to Oregon Department of Education and it is placed on file there as well for reference. And at this point, I don't think they, we don't have to wait for approval. So, and we've involved the county health early on in the process, really to help identify any particular challenges early on. So that as the plan progresses, we're doing as minimal backpedaling as possible to make adjustments. It's going to be, because the picture continues to change, but we're, we're trying to be very purposeful about that so that we're able to continue to forward momentum as much as possible.
Okay, there's, there's a question, really just asking you for some clarification, Mr. Marshall, regarding masks. Saying that we'll follow guidelines, however, when I read the guidelines, it states that staff need to wear face coverings anytime they are within six feet of students or others.
Right, so those are some of the instructional details that we will need to work out. We've had conversations that we still need some feedback on from the health department of, for example, if there's a quick need for a staff to approach a student, would a plexiglass barrier suffice for that? And so those are the application questions that we need to address. But right now the guidelines are, yeah. And it's also, I think the timeline is fifteen minutes. So if you're looking at needing to be closer than, than the required distance for an extended period of time, then we do need to look at masks and/or other personal protective equipment. But we are not to that application level yet. That will be the individual discussions that will really be starting next week at the building level of how are we going to deal with that? That's going to obviously involve the conversations and staff training as well as with the students. That's why it really needs everybody involved in the process.
Okay, question, is kindergarten academy still an option?
Right now, we're considering a variation of that. The kindergarten assessment is not required this year by ODE. So we've had initial conversations. Helena's already started some work on that where we would use that time to set up a process where families could come in. They could see the classroom, the kids could meet the teacher. Obviously, there's a lot of things that need to happen to make that work, but that's our intent would be to, to, to support those sorts of things that were very easy in the past. And lots of folks had come in and we noticed not every kindergarten parent wanted to come in and drop their student off on the first few days. So looking at ways to maintain those connections and support those connections while following the guidelines. So, so a modified academy is what we are considering at this point. I think Sky's got her hand up.
Okay, let me. Okay, Sky Marie, you should be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any idea about standardized testing in the spring, how?
No.
No ideas.
No idea. No, that, that is really, we're, we're just, I mean, as, as those questions come up, they're thrown up on the board. There has been no discussion at the state level on, on the intent and what will be required and what will be available. That's really far enough in the future of everyone in the state and around the nation is focused on how are we going to safely and successfully pull some fall?
Yeah, makes sense to deal with the, the big problem at hand and then see what develops. I just wondered if you guys had heard anything at your level about. Okay, all right, thank you for answering my question.
Thanks. Jay, did you have anything?
Oh, Angela, I just wanted to let you know, I just unmuted Michelle. When you get a chance, she has a question.
Okay, take it away, Michelle.
Hi, so I just have a question. You were talking about as far as the teachers coming within so far of the kids. Like with K school, that just doesn't seem reasonable. I mean, these are little kids we're talking about, so I don't see how you're going to keep a bunch of little kids away from the teachers.
Right, those are practical questions that we're going to have to work through.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, my, my grandson is, is a, you know, seven-year-old and he has some special needs and he's very close with all the adults, you know, at school. So, you know, I just was wondering how that is going to work.
It's going to be tough. There's no elementary hubs. And so there are some pretty significant challenges with that, that we're, you know, what is the best that we can do to, to support as close as to, to support as close as we can get to that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Looks like we have another hand raised. Tara, I hope I'm saying your name right. I'm going to unmute you. Let me try again. It's not letting me unmute her. Nancy, can you give that a try?
She can unmute herself, I think.
There we go.
I did it myself. Hi, my name is Tara. My question is about volunteerism. How is that going to work if it's going to work at all?
It's, at best, it's going to work on a much more reduced and restricted level at this point. Obviously, that has to fit in with all of the, one, the physical distancing. So there's a limited capacity for, you know, X number of people in any given classroom or space. And two, with the contact tracing requirements and all that sort of thing. So that is an open question. The third part is, you know, some of our volunteer groups tend to be of, you know, a demographic that's of higher risk anyway. So there's, there's that question as well. So really that's, that's on the board. That's, that we do not have a specific answer. And, and we'll, we'll most likely take those on a case-by-case basis. I mean, it's a little different if it's an individual wanting to do a specific thing, then we look at, is there a way that that can work? But most likely, we would not be starting the school year with that. We start the school year as best we can and then we will continue to work through, and this will evolve. Again, there is certainly potential both ways for change in our guidance and requirements. So we're going to need to be flexible and responsive to that potential. And as we, we're going to do everything we can for as strong as possible start to the school year. But there's going to be things that we're going to need to adjust. There's going to be things that we learn work really well and things that don't work as well, that we will need to change as we go. And, you know, it's, while it's not preferable, we're all going to have to try and be as comfortable with that process as possible and, and recognize the stress that that can cause.
But those of us that are actively involved in our children's classroom, like my husband and I are in the classrooms almost every day.
Right.
Between my son and our daughter and another classrooms that our kids aren't in. That's not entirely off the table, possibly, maybe.
So the good way to phrase it, I, I agree, possibly, maybe. So really our goal, just like everything you said, is we want to find a way to make it work. We, we are required to follow the guidelines and requirements, but within that, if there's a way we can figure out to make it work, we, we want to do that.
And also, yeah, it would be nice to show some support to our teachers too.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, David, we have a question in the chat. Will every classroom have single desks? Or will some have tables with plexiglass?
My understanding of most likely, we'll need to have individual student desks or tables. Either will work. I believe that a plexiglass divider on a big table does not meet the requirements. But we will, that, that's, that'll be our process. If we go, well, we can make it work this way. Then we'll see if, if, okay, does this work with the requirements? And if it does, great. If not, we'll continue to modify till we find a solution that does. But my understanding presently is that if you had a six-foot table, you couldn't have kids at both ends and a plexiglass divider in the middle as an acceptable. That doesn't meet the definition with the 35 square feet. But you could have one kid at a big table. There's no restriction against that.
I actually got a, a good question through text that my interest or audience will all share. What happens if a student gets sick or shows that they have some symptoms while they're at school?
Right. That's all part of the required plans as well. I didn't want this to be like a three-hour presentation because that's all in the guidelines of the handbook in terms of the district has to have a protocol. We have to have an identified area to isolate the students who is showing specific symptoms until the parents can come and pick up the student. And again, it's that list of symptoms that are being looked for, and I would say for either staff or students. And so we will also have as part of that and are developing right now, communication protocols. So one, we have to notify the health department and two, notifying staff and families as well, should those things happen.
Okay, so at this time, I think we've, we've answered all of the questions we have. And I'm not seeing other hands raised.
David, you there? Quick, a quick question regarding a couple of topics. What do you envision P E to look like?
Off the top of my head, I mean, if, if we look at the model that they've been able to do for the sports practices, that would probably be the starting point at this point. So it would, it would need to be, you know, a very structured, specific plan and we would need to be able to address the, the cleaning, you know, in between. There's certainly questions where, you know, lockers and dressing down and those sorts of things probably wouldn't be able to happen at least initially. So, so it's obviously that's an important part of the kid's day. And so my understanding of the analogy is it would be parallel to the requirements that we have for sports practice.
Okay. And then maybe just for the people who have logged in today, could you just, I mean, I'm sure it's very in-depth, but give a quick rundown of the, how in-depth the team is at the district that's working on all of these plans?
And it's a multiple teams, really. Other required parts of the plan that, that we would be doing anyway is gathering input from a wide range of groups, including, we've already had an initial meeting with representatives from the tribe. And that will continue in terms of purposefully getting their input in the process. Input, input, input is a key part of it in terms of our team members. We have, it's just under 40 staff members who have volunteered. And of course, the entire administrative team has been called back for periods of time during the summer. They're, they're not scheduled to work in July normally either, but obviously the work demands it. And so they're part of the team. Trish is, is definitely part of the team. It's, it's really where it applies to you, you're part of the team. So Jess, our maintenance director has been key in working with his custodian staffs on identifying those needs and, and really working through what is our cleaning capacity. So it's, it's my intent to be to tap the, where the folks have the most expertise. So our staff are going to have the expertise, the teachers and classified staff can have the expertise. Not that they won't be able to discuss anything else, but the interaction, the structure with the kids and moving the kids from point A to B, our custodians and maintenance of, okay, let's get these, you know, these, these cleaning supplies and tools to help with that. So for example, we have used some of our, the budgeted, we've received some CARES Act dollars. And partly the intent of that is to help support the additional expenses that we're having. So we did order several, they're, they're like, they use static. So you spray the disinfectant and, and they're statically charged. So then it will stick to the entire surface. So it makes the, the, the cleaning and the sterilization a very efficient process. So you don't have to physically wipe around every nook and cranny. It adheres to it because of the static charge. So we're looking at, when we're, we're doing things like that to say, we only have X number of custodians and that sort of thing. So what's our capacity to do that? And how can we expand that? So we'll be, that's what we use, you know, spraying down the buses for the deep cleaning. And then that's, that's the work still to do. So really it's again, whatever the expertise, they're going to be involved in the process.
And I, two last things, sorry. What, what, how do we, how do we manage if, if youth in like the high school or even the junior high have extracurriculars that would be conducted after school? How would we, how would we make sure that a youth that may be scheduled in the morning has the access to getting back to the afternoon extracurricular activities?
Oh, you're talking transportation?
Yeah, just thinking if they go to the school in the mornings, they have to go home, but they have some extracurricular after school. How do we ensure that they have an, an equity lens of getting back to be able to get to those extracurricular activities?
Well, I would say most likely is, as a, as the schedules are tightened a little bit, and this is all going to start to roll pretty quick, especially as those larger groups really sink their teeth into the work. One, one option could be as part of the scheduling process is reaching out to the family so that, you know, a potential solution would be, okay, if your student has these needs, we'll schedule them in the afternoon so that they can just go from school to the extracurricular and, and try and take care of it that way. The other potential, it's, it's really would then become a question of our transportation capacity. You know, is there space for them to jump on, on a route that exists? Because that's all going to have to be more structured than it has in the past, just with transportation. We're really not going to be able to have a parent call half an hour before school's out and say, can you send them to the babysitters or to grandma and grandpas? Because we, we have to monitor exactly who's where and with a limited number of spaces available on the bus. So, so if we have capacity, we can look at those solutions. If we have the ability of potentially even running a, you know, an activities route, those sorts of things. And that's just really a capacity question. So we still have some other questions to answer first before we can dig into the weeds of how can we support families and students with those things? Great question.
And the last thing is, is I get asked quite a bit about how, how the community could help the school. And I don't know if there's a way to, you know, in, have some intentionality. There are one or two things on, you know, if, how could the community assist the school during this process?
I mean, the, the, the first thing that comes to my mind is, is are these sorts of things of ask the questions, share the concerns. We want the good, the bad, the ugly. The more information that we have, the better that we can move forward. So that's the basic level of let us know your questions, let us know your concerns. We need to dig into the weeds of your specific needs in order to do everything we can to identify them, just like we talked about with the feedback from the community saying, I'm worried about family being scrambled with one kid in the morning and one kid in the afternoon or having altered schedules. Well, obviously that's a priority to make that work for those families. You know, and I, I would certainly love input on are there concrete actions that the community can do to help support it? I'm sure those will come, especially as we get going with the startup, it means we'll present themselves. I think there's going to be some great opportunities as we're looking towards the childcare needs and, and how we can support that and what the district is able to do, whether it's direct support, indirect support, facilitating, even being a grant manager to support somebody else doing, you know, setting up the childcare. We need to be leaving no stone unturned for that. So in, input and stepping up saying, I'm happy to, to serve on this group, provide this input and be on this committee. So.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
David, this is potentially a, a nice concluding question from our chat. If we have asked to be a part of planning groups, when should we expect an email inviting us to the first meeting next week?
Should have already gotten one. So, so the invitations, the first meeting is Tuesday and then with a save the date for Friday. So if you are, and we'll post this, but if, if you said in the survey that you'd like to serve on it, you're more than welcome to. If you did not already receive the meeting invite, send me an email and then we'll make sure you get that invite so that you can participate in that work. So the more, the better. Really important that we have a representative group, that we have both teachers and classified from all three schools. I think that's how we're going to get the best result. Because we'll be doing some district-wide work as well as work at the individual level. So yes. Let me know if you did not receive the invitation and we will get that out to you. Great question.
So I don't see any more hands raised. I think we've, we've gone through all of our chat. And Nancy posted a link and a reminder that people can still take our planning survey that's open through Friday at 5:00 PM. So the more, like David's been saying, the more data we get, the better.
Yeah, we want to hear from you and it, it, you know, it doesn't, you know, certainly problem-solving focus is best, but whatever your concerns, frustrations, those sorts of things, we need to hear it. That's important.
Okay. Well, again, thank you, everybody, for, for dialing in here tonight. And thank you, Mr. Marshall, and those that helped put this on. Appreciate the efforts. Again, you know, I'll repeat kind of what I said earlier, but it's, it's the board's intention and the district as a whole to just, you know, be as open and as communicative as we can through this process. And, you know, what the district knows, we need to share out. And at the same time solicit input and, you know, form up the best opening plan that we can going forward. So, you know, know that that's our intention. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So thanks for all your participation, everyone. And unless there's anything else, I guess we'll, we'll bid you a good evening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.